Call to order the August 9, 2018 meeting of the City Bellingham Planning Commission. I'd like to ask everyone to silence electronic devices, so if you're on your laptop or phone or something, please make sure it's on silent. And with that, Heather, will you please call the roll?
Phyllis McKee?
Here.
Holly Taishi?
Here.
Lisa Anderson?
Here.
Mike Estes?
Here.
Garrett O'Brien?
Here.
Iris Mady-Gibson and Steve Perks is excused.
Yeah, and both Iris and Steve expressed, you know, they were sorry they couldn't be here because they wanted to speak about this topic, but we're going to carry on without them. Before we get going, the topic of tonight's meeting is the proposed temporary shelter ordinance. This is a public hearing tonight, so we're here to listen to the members of the audience who want to speak, and then after that, we may deliberate on the topic further. But before that, we are going to approve a few sets of minutes, and then we're going to have a public comment period on other topics which I will explain. And so to start, we do have two sets of minutes, June 7th and June 21st. Heather sent those out. Does anybody have any objection to the minutes? Lisa?
Not objections, but I just want to note that I abstain from the one that I did not attend.
The 21st.
The 21st.
Yes, okay, because you're not in attendance. Thank you. So unless there's an objection, those minutes will be approved. All right? Thank you. So before we get into tonight's topic, which is a public hearing, we'll have an open public comment period, and so this is an opportunity for any of the three of you in the audience to speak about another topic. So if you would like to spend a few minutes sharing your thoughts on any other topic other than tonight's ordinance topic, now's your chance. You can come up to the microphone and share your thoughts with us. If you are here to speak about tonight's shelter ordinance topic, then you need to wait, and we'll have a comment opportunity on that later. And if you don't want to speak, you don't have to, in either scenario. So there's no obligation to comment. Is there anything that anybody would like to speak about, other than tonight's topic? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close the open public comment period. So, tonight is a public hearing, which means it's predominantly about hearing from the public on this particular topic, the proposed temporary shelter ordinance. We've had a few work sessions on this, and I think we're going to start with an introduction from staff, planning director Rick Sepler is here, and planner Lisa Poole. And Lisa, it looks like you're getting up, so are you gonna?
She's going to start.
You're gonna take us away?
While she's getting ready. Members of the commission, we come before you tonight to present materials dealing with permanent rules for temporary homeless shelters. Again, this does not reflect any applications that are pending, or any prior approvals or issues that have occurred before, but how we would go forward. As you might recall, council adopted interim rules, those are emergency rules, we're using those now until these permanent rules are done. And just to remind all present, the process would be, planning commission will consider this matter and make a recommendation to council. Council will hold a public hearing, consider public comment submitted at the public hearing, as well as written testimony, and ultimately make a decision and may choose to adopt permanent rules on this matter. And with that, I'll turn it over to senior planner Lisa Poole.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Poole, senior planner. Just wanted to provide you with an overview of the draft ordinance we have held to work sessions on this particular topic. And to reiterate, the city goals with this ordinance are to facilitate the location of temporary shelters throughout the community, to protect public health and safety through a set of standards, and to anticipate legal and other challenges based on the experiences of other jurisdictions. There are four types of temporary shelters in the ordinance. We have temporary building encampments that are located in permanent structures, we have temporary safe parking areas, temporary tent encampments, and temporary tiny house encampments. Where would these shelters be allowed? They would be allowed anywhere in the community with a temporary use permit, except for temporary building encampments. Those would be allowed only in industrial zones, and then commercial and industrial areas within urban villages, and commercial zones where hotels and motels are permitted. And I do want to note that religious, temporary shelters on land owned or controlled by religious organizations would be exempt from the zoning requirements for temporary building encampments, and that's due to a state requirement. So what are the standards and requirements in the ordinance? There's a whole host, and most of them are related to public health and safety of not only the residents of the shelters, but also the broader community. And that includes health and safety, operations of the shelters, a code of conduct for the shelters, maximum occupancy, and parking. Those are just some examples. The temporary tiny house encampments would be subject to additional safety requirements. So now I'll just go through some of the changes based on your last discussion, which occurred in June, just demonstrating where we made the changes in the ordinance. Specific to increasing the number of people allowed in temporary shelters, that would be the safe parking, tent encampments, and temporary tiny house encampments. We did include a stipulation that the planning director, as informed by the Watcom County point in time census of homeless residents, could increase the number of people who may be housed in the temporary shelters. And the ordinance states that these three types of temporary shelters can include no more than 100 people at one time, and that is no more than 300 citywide at one time. For temporary building encampments, there could be no more than 300 people allowed citywide, and no more than four encampments. So the language noted above is specifically for those three shelter types. Clarify permitted fence materials, is chain link okay? And yes, we did clarify in the ordinance that chain link is acceptable. A six-foot fence around the perimeter of a property is required to be installed for safety and security. It can be chain link or another type of temporary fencing, and the director may waive this requirement under certain circumstances. Require sponsors to note their mission statement and statement of intent for temporary shelters. And we did include some specific language for the sponsor or managing agency to submit their mission statement and statement of intent with the application, and also how they plan on meeting the requirements. Provide clarity on how managing agencies should handle residents with warrants. We did include additional language in the ordinance regarding how sponsors and/or managing agencies should handle people with active felony warrants and sex offenders. And we did work with some current sponsors of shelters, as well as the Bellingham Police Department, to develop that language. Specifically, it says that if a sponsor and/or managing agency becomes aware of a resident with an active felony warrant, it is required to follow protocol as approved by the Bellingham Police Department for addressing warrants, and they must make the residents aware of the fact that they are subject to status checks. Clarify details of the transportation plan. The ordinance now states that the transportation plan should include a description of transit, pedestrian, and bicycle access from the site to services and schools. So that language should have been in yellow in the ordinance, and it wasn't, but we just added that last part, that we're just looking for how various modes of transportation are can be accessed to and from the site. So now there are a few additional changes that staff is recommending. As we've gone through these past few months, we've done additional research and talked to some sponsors and managing agencies and developed additional language for the managing agency. And so we're stating that the managing agency cannot include a group of homeless residents, that the managing agency can be the same organization as a sponsor agency, which are government entities, nonprofits, or religious organizations. The temporary homeless shelter definition has been revised to note that temporary shelters are the same as temporary encampments as defined in RCW 35.21.915. And that is the state legislation particular to exempting religious organizations from requirements other than those dealing with public health and safety. Safety requirements for tiny house encampments. The safety features for tiny house encampments have been revised to note that portable oil-filled heaters must be supplied with the unit, and are the only type of heating device that can be permitted. Before, we were not allowing heating units, and after talking with the building code inspector and some sponsors of shelters, it seems it's a good idea for several reasons to go ahead and put a safe heating unit into the tiny homes. It prevents mold and mildew, and also it prevents the residents from putting in their own heating unit that might be unsafe. Requirements for sponsors of temporary shelters. We have added, per our legal department, a requirement for them to obtain liability insurance, and to sign a whole harmless agreement for shelters located on city-owned property. And lastly, zoning requirements for temporary building encampments. These have been modified to allow this use in industrial areas within urban villages. Before, we had only allowed it in certain parts of urban villages, but since we're allowing them in industrial zoning districts elsewhere, it makes sense to also allow them within the industrial areas in urban village zoning districts. And we've also stated that in zones with a mix of uses, the more restrictive zoning requirements will apply. So as Rick stated, the next steps are to follow up with a potential work session if needed, and then the city council will hold a public hearing and also have work sessions in committee. And then in the future, we don't have a date yet set, but we'll be bringing back another ordinance for longer-term shelters. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did want to mention a late add today in talking with Kurt Nabafeld. We do need to add some language in our section H of the ordinance that says, that allows the city to extend the decision timeline in case additional time is needed to investigate and formalize conditions, and that would be only if there's mutual agreement between the city and applicant. And that's a longstanding policy that we have, we just wanted to clarify this in this particular ordinance. So we'll add that language for the next iteration or the final ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we take public comment and open the public hearing, does anybody have any simple questions or clarifying questions for Lisa that they want to ask now? Phyllis?
You mentioned 300 total in the city, was that my understanding? Or some given number? I guess my question is the overall, how do we limit that number?
So for the safe parking tiny homes and tent encampments, that would be no more than 100 people at one time in one shelter, but then no more than 300 citywide at one time. So it allows multiple shelters, but it puts a cap on the overall number. And then for the temporary building encampments, no more than 300 allowed citywide, and no more than four encampments. That was some language we worked on before.
Right.
And then there's also requirements for how many beds per square footage, and things like that to limit numbers.
So if we have in excess of that number of homeless people in the city, that means we're just not servicing the others, is that?
That was the, if I might, the provision to allow us to change those numbers if the point in time count shows that we have more folks and need more space. Right now, what we've accommodated by the numbers provided exceeds the count population of folks who are in shelter.
Oh, good, thank you.
So we have some headroom if they were established. We also are aware they're not all going to be established, so you allow for more cumulatively. But if at any point in time we find ourselves with a greater population than we've accommodated, we can revise the numbers, and it can be done administratively.
Great, thank you. Right, and that also doesn't include the longer-term shelters.
You mentioned the religious exemption. That, I just want to clarify, and we've talked about this before, but that only exempts them from the, like, the zoning requirements that would prohibit their location. They still would have to comply with the regulations that we are adopting here?
The state preemption for temporary encampments, either in buildings or in tents or other facilities, says that the city can only, cannot deny the project, but can only condition it for public health and safety.
Sure.
And in our review, we looked at the standards we're proposing, we would suggest those are all health and safety standards, so they would all be applicable.
So they would still have to come in and get a permit?
Yes.
And show compliance with the operations plan and all those kinds of components that we've incorporated? They just, we just couldn't deny them outright?
Right. The preemption doesn't say you just get to do it.
Yeah.
It says you have to follow the rules, and our rules have to be very narrow to public health and safety.
Thank you. Lisa?
Not necessarily a question, but I just want to thank you for page six, because in the past, when we have questions, and then they carry over, and then they carry over, I really appreciate how you outlined the areas of clarifications or questions we had, and then how you addressed it. It really helped me streamline to make sure that everything was covered. So I would hope that in the future, any other planning people listening, something in this format definitely, for me, helped greatly to go through this and make sure that everything was covered that we had asked, instead of hunting and pecking through the chapters to find it. So kudos to you for putting this in, in this format, it's very appreciated. I would just maybe ask one thing in the future, what I personally would find helpful, is at the end of where you address how it is addressed, is maybe the page or location that we would find that inserted, and that way it makes it a quick check for us to see how the flow and how the other contents flow into it, because I had to kind of try to go back through and find it appropriately. But it was a great place to start, it eliminated some of my work, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, that was very helpful. Because, you know, all of us make comments, and you can't remember if the other person's comment was addressed, and that really helped me as well, to kind of make sure. Anything else brief right now, and if not, we'll circle back for discussion? Okay, so let's open the public hearing up to public comment. Anyone can comment, you don't have to have signed up, I did get a signup sheet. There's two individuals signed up, so we'll have them comment first, and then if the third member of our audience wants to make a comment, you're more than welcome to. And so Bridget is first, Bridget Reeves, and then Russ, looks like Sepienza, thank you. And I'll put a timer up here for four minutes, which will give you some time to talk. You need to come down to the microphone, state your name, an address for the record, and then I'll try and warn you when you've got about 30 seconds left, so you don't, you know, start off on a new train of thought or something, so. But we're ready to go. So Bridget, take us away.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your continued work to serve some of the most vulnerable people in our community. The passing, or this work on the temporary homeless encamp, or the temporary encampment ordinance will help to ensure that accessible, safe shelter is available to people experiencing homelessness in our community. As mentioned, my name is Bridget Reeves, I serve as the Director of Programs at the Lighthouse Mission Ministries. And over the last two years, I've had the great opportunity to be intimately involved with the expansion of services down at the drop-in center. It has been an adventure, and quite a learning experience. I've heard feedback from guests, neighbors, community members, and other agencies about the drop-in center. And I want to acknowledge that there are significant challenges to serving this population in this facility, in this location. And yet, even with these challenges, there have been great successes. And so I know today we're talking specifically about the ordinance, and not specifically the Lighthouse Mission, and that permit, and that sort of thing, but just giving kind of a picture as to what this permit, or what this ordinance could do to increase success and further the recovery of so many in our community. Just want to share a bit of our successes there. So we've seen people that have never been before connected with behavioral health services get connected with counselors and engaged in treatment for the first time. We've seen people address legal issues with support of staff and law advocates. We've witnessed people go to go from isolated relationally to having safe supports. People that have felt they've had nothing to offer the community have volunteered at the drop-in center and found work in our community. None of that could be possible without our fabulous community partners, including those that work onsite at the DIC specifically, including Opportunity Council, the HOT Team, law advocates, Lifeline, C Mar, Compass Health, the Eye Clinic, the Bellingham Public Library, and so many volunteers that dedicate their time and energy and resources there. One of the things, though, that gets me most excited is when someone decides to take a next step in their recovery by entering into a more intensive specialty shelter that we offer. And so I have a paper here, is it okay if I move away from the mic for a second? Okay, so this paper here offers...
You might have to pick up the mic. Why don't you speak to it, and then we pass it out?
Okay. You guys get a sneak preview there. So this piece of paper offers a picture of kind of our continuum of care at the Lighthouse Mission, so the drop-in center being serving about 150 each night.
Pass it down.
Oh, great, okay, thanks. So the drop-in center houses around 150 people total each night, and then from, in the wintertime, there's an additional 40 that we can serve with our partner Fountain Community Church at the severe weather shelter as well. From there, people can move on towards services in our ascent program in the main mission building, as well as the agape home for women and children. And then next steps from that is our new life program, transitional housing and aftercare. And so shelters or encampments such as this one offer people that opportunity to take next steps. It's not just an end game in and of itself, but it is a launching pad for greater recovery as well. These other specialty shelters offer classes, case management, community, and support. Our hope and goal is to provide holistic care to people when they enter our services.
About 30 seconds, Bridget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So there's so much going on at the mission, and oftentimes people drive by the mission and just see our spatial limitations by people outside, and not necessarily the successes and stories that are going on inside. So tonight, I want to invite you to do two things. One, to come by on a tour of the mission. If you've never been inside the doors, never talked with the people, never talked with staff, come on down. Come to the mission, you have an open invitation to come on a tour, scheduled or not, we would love to have you down there, we'd love to show off that work there. And then, secondly, and lastly, I would encourage you to continue to engage in the conversation, continue to talk with us. We would love constructive feedback. We're continuing, evolving, and growing as an organization, and I would love that feedback and that support, and that constructive critique there. And so, thank you so much for the opportunity to share tonight, and for your continued work on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bridget. Okay, so next up is Russ, and then if you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome
Good evening, my name is Russ Sepienza, my address is 1201 North Garden Street, apartment A3 in Bellingham. And I'd like to thank the previous speaker for giving us an idea of what's going on at Lighthouse Mission. However, there are a lot of people who, for some reason or other, may not be comfortable being at Lighthouse Mission. So these shelters are going to be really important in that regard, so that folks who may not want to be in a faith-based shelter like Lighthouse Mission can find some sort of support. Because ultimately, the idea is to get as much help to people who need it, and to people who want it as well. A lot of what I've seen, you know, just, oh my gosh, even today, I've seen probably about eight or nine people already, just on the streets of Bellingham, with shopping carts, and it's a very small area. So if you have that many in a small amount of space, there's a pretty good chance that there's a lot more. There's so much more going on, because a lot of folks are not just going to come out and say, "Well, I'm homeless, hello." No one's going to say that. In fact, a lot of people are going through shame, fear, insecurity, because of their But I think what's really needed is, and that was referred to earlier, access. We need access to mental health, to physical health, to various housing services. In fact, I briefly chatted with a homeless person who didn't even go get housing because of the waiting list. It's two to three years. And this man is a disabled veteran. I mean, what does that say about us as a society? If we basically tell those who gave their best years of their lives to go to hell, you know? We don't need you. Ultimately, I think education is key to solving the homeless crisis. It's not panacea, but it's a good first step. And these shelters that you folks have done quite a bit of work on, and I want to share my thanks to you for that. What was I going to say? Anyway, the shelters are an enormous help, are a enormous step forward. And, all right, well, I just want to thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Russ. Would anybody else like to comment? Nope? Okay. Well, thank you both for commenting, and seeing no one else, we will close the public comment portion of this meeting, the public hearing. And so I think with that, we have an opportunity, because there were just a few commenters, to start discussion about the topic, and see if planning commissioners are ready to do that, or have a comment, or want to do that, questions for staff, things like that. So with that, I'd like to ask if there's anybody who does have a comment or a question for staff to start us off. Anything specific? Lisa?
I'll have a few, but I'll just start off with some of the easy. I think we had previous discussions about the vehicle temporary locations, and I think there was discussion about why RVs wouldn't necessarily be allowed because of security and safety, and because of things that could be happening. And so we, on page 11, line 26, it lists living in their cars. And knowing semantics and how people will pick things apart, I know we wouldn't necessarily want to use the describer of motor vehicles, sorry, it might be your page three, but our page, you know, it's like three and then 11 at the bottom of it. Line number is 126. I didn't see it further in the actual ordinance, but I imagine similar language was being used.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I understand we wouldn't necessarily want to use motor vehicles, because that could include RVs, but I could see individuals who have trucks with canopies. I do know several, and I could just see someone in the public filing a complaint because they think only cars could be there, and if you have trucks, they would not be allowed. Is that an intention that trucks would not be allowed, or would it be appropriate to identify cars slash trucks? I know it's a little...
Just to hold up, so people could see it.
I don't want to say nitpicky, but I think the admission of other types of vehicles that would be allowed could be something that would be a potential issue. I don't want it to be an oversight.
I think we address, that's the definition, so we could change that from cars to vehicles, and then we can clarify it in the specific standards, and I'm turning to the standards now.
Was that further in the packet, and I missed it then, under definition? I kind of tried to hunt through there, and I just wasn't finding.
So what I'm informed is, we may not address it on point, but we could add a section saying those living in their vehicles, and then saying the proposed plan, the type of vehicles will be defined in the application. The intent is to deal with vehicles and light trucks, you know, cars and light trucks, as opposed to RVs, or box trucks, or other things. You know, if someone came in a van, it's not as much an issue, but if someone comes in an RV where multiple people can gather, the experience in other communities, notably in San Diego, is there could be inappropriate things that happen, because there's no way of knowing what's going on.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate that. I just thought the word cars was maybe unintentionally limiting and could be an issue with people being able to say this is not allowed.
If the planning commissioner gives us direction, we could clarify that.
Is there a direct prohibition on RVs anywhere in here?
We might need to put that in.
Yeah, it might be easier to just say, "in their vehicles," and then, "but not RVs." That might be more clear. Commission, have any thought on that? Is that, I mean, Lisa, is that a suggestion you'd like to make? I mean, I think she could...
I would like to make the suggestion to define it a little bit better, and make notation that RVs of a particular size would be prohibited, as what you see fit. Because I think a van would be appropriate, but a large, you know, 36-foot RV may not be.
So we would just be prohibiting RVs from the part, talking about parking area, not from other locations?
Just, yeah, just from the...
Just from parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, for those who weren't privy to the prior discussion, a number of the safe parking areas, the ones that are most successful, work with passenger cars and light vehicle, light trucks.
Yeah.
That the RVs do have ability for people to congregate. It makes it difficult for the volunteer groups and others who supervise to know what's going on. There have been inappropriate things that happened in Seattle's safe parking area when RVs were allowed.
Does anyone have any objection to that recommendation? I don't think there is. I think that's the direction from the commission, to try and incorporate some language. Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else? Mike? Nope? You got something? Go.
Are we foreseeing any scenarios where a city would be providing any services to any of these encampments?
Yes, I can imagine the city might help either fund or provide services that are provided. We do it now. The homeless outreach team is funded by the city, so, and they would be one of the groups that might very well be providing services to folks.
Well, I was just, on page 24, you got the language that was added about whole harmless agreements and additional assured liability insurance on, looked like it was only if the use was on city property. I wonder if there's any capacity where the city's providing services, if it might be a good idea to consult with legal about having that same agreement in place for the service providers that are city-funded.
Yeah, and that is a good point. We do have those arrangements now. Contractually, we do have liability addressed and other issues associated before we provide funding.
Okay.
So standard contracting and cities' format addresses that.
Sure.
Thanks. On that topic, was there any discussion about insurance requirements for non-city-owned land? And I just asked, you know, with no insurance requirement, someone could get a permit, operate a facility, something could happen, and there could be no insurance coverage for that, whether it was like a devastating fire, or, you know, a criminal activity? I'm just curious if that's even something that was considered, or if there's any pros or cons to that?
If I were a property owner, I'd want to have some coverage.
Yeah, you'd think you would.
Because otherwise, to indemnify myself, certain organizations have that coverage anyway. If it's a religious organization, they typically would have that for their activities and uses. Again, we're most concerned with the safety of the, public health and safety of the residents.
Yeah.
As opposed to a potential liability for a provider. One would think, again, if they get any funding from the city at all, or if it's city property, they're going to need to provide those services.
I was just curious. I'm not, I don't want to encourage more barriers to these things happening, so, but I was just curious if that was something that was considered. So, thank you. Lisa?
I have some questions about the permitting process, because it lists in here quite frequently that it would be a type-one process for quite a bit of it. Could you, for people who may hear or read type-one, but not necessarily understand the notification that would go out, could you please explain the type-one?
Sure. Type-one is an administrative process. I don't believe there is notification provided. No, typically not. We've, in the past, one would imagine having a community meeting is a useful thing, but we don't want to create roadblocks to be able to issue a permit in a timely manner for these needed facilities. Again, with the state preemption and the format of the ordinance, we're encouraging these to be created, and these rules should deal with most of the potential impacts, both locationally, size and operationally. Any administrative decision can be appealed, so if someone believes we made an error of fact or law, we disregarded one of the rules that are in here or standards, then they can appeal it to the hearing examiner, and the examiner would adjudicate it, determine whether there was a fair appeal, and overturn or remand the application, or reject the appeal.
I've got a few things that I want to cover on this topic. One of them is page 30. H, Decision and Appeal. The first line says, "Notice: All temporary shelter applications will be reviewed under a type-two process." So I'm assuming, could you clarify that for me? I was a little bit confused, since everything else is type-one. Is it that if there was a appeal, that the notification is type-two?
Okay. So I want to clarify, I've just been informed, we meant it to be a type-two process, which does provide notice.
For all of these? Oh, that just eliminates about 90% of what I was going to cover.
And I apologize.
Because type-one is in there a lot.
You asked me what a type-one was, and I responded, but I should have looked on point at the ordinance. I apologize.
Everywhere that it's currently stating it's a type-one process, we should expect it's a type-two process?
Okay, let's Kurt Abafeld say it.
So kind of where my concern is, isn't so much the industrial, it's a little bit of the commercial, because I think the businesses adjacent should have an idea this is coming in, but also that it's being allowed in urban village residential transition. And looking at the maps of those residential transition zones, because it's listed as a type-one, you have a lot of residents. And so I think people living adjacent to something being moved in should have some process of notification.
Sure. Good evening, Kurt Abafeld, Planning and Community Development Department. I guess there's a little bit of confusion, what the type-two process is used for all decisions of temporary encampment licenses. You can see that on page 30 of the packet. That's where, under H, Decision and Appeal, the decision, all temporary shelter applications are reviewed under a type-two process. However, if we extend those, the extensions in the timeline section are the type-one decisions.
And I caught that, and that made sense to me, because if it's been approved already, providing that there wasn't a SEPA or something that was needed.
Correct.
It makes sense, the extension would be administrative. But I figured the first notice properties within a certain, a type-two would afford would be notified that this is moving in next to them.
Correct, and that's the way that it's drafted.
Okay. So I assume throughout this plan that type-one would be adjusted to indicate type-two? Isn't it, or am I still...
For extension.
Pardon?
Except for extension.
Except for extension.
Correct.
Just confusing, because, yeah, you read that section first.
Type-two does say for the one, yeah.
But you are accelerating the review period significantly from a typical type-two process.
Correct. And we did that on purpose, like Rick said earlier, these things, sometimes we, you know, we don't want these things to go through that typical, longer period of timeframe. We want to make sure that we can get these shelters established quickly, but still allow for public comment and opportunity.
So, not wanting, not wanting to jump the gun, but I would appreciate when, whenever a motion, perhaps tonight, could be moved to move this forward for a vote, that it is noted that this correction would be made?
But just to clarify, I don't think that needs to be corrected.
Yeah, they're, it's drafted correctly. The way that it's drafted is kind of confusing. If you, the way that the decision is done, the decision is done, all temporary shelters are reviewed under the type-two process.
Okay. So the applicant would go through a type-one process still?
No. The only thing that goes through the type-one is an extension.
Okay.
And it is drafted the way that the type-one shows up in the frequency and duration, so it talks about the time limitations on that. However, any extension of those time limitations is the type-one process. So once you get your initial approval, in order to operate, is that type-two process that requires public notice. And then any extension granted through that process is through a type-one, which is no public comment.
So on page 30, H, section H, Lisa, that H1 applies to, is that, Kurt, that applies to everything?
Correct, yeah.
And that's your type-two process, just to get a permit. Then you jump back to page 28, section D, to talk about extensions.
So, page 18, section 16B. This is where my confusion started. So, under land use decisions are classified into seven review processes, and then it says, is that just part of the definition? Because it says, "Type-one, A, type-one review process is an administrative review and decision by the director. It is exempt from notice requirements." So, and that, that language is in several places. I did not note every one, but that was my impression, reading that, that it would be a type-one process. And since I saw it in a couple of places, I assume that's how it applied. So I assume I'm reading this incorrectly.
You're reading the existing code with underline and strikeout. The only changes proposed on the underline and strikeout, since we had to add it in, are shown in red, and that's my...
We, yes, so we had to add this use into the type-one section of the code for the extensions. We didn't have to add it, this use, to the type-two, because temporary use permits are already a type-two. So, yeah, I would pay attention more to the new chapter section.
Certainly confusing, but we're amending the existing code to include the area that's shown in red.
Okay. And I wasn't reading that section as being pertaining only to extensions.
Right, it is, it is, if we went to the code today, that's what the code says for, if you go to 2110040B1, it's going to read that way, because that's how we explain it. The change in that section solely is when you go down to 23 and 24 and 25, that's what you're considering tonight.
Okay.
And we're adding that in, because we have to make, as I understand it, we have to make type-one, type-two, type-one for extensions operative for this topic, and that's all it does. But the assurance is, and we will ensure for consistency, all these permits, except for extension, are a type-two process.
Okay.
But when you've already gotten the permit, and you wish to get the legal extension as proposed, you would use a type-one process. Am I correct? We can clarify that, sure.
I just wasn't clear reading through that, so I wasn't...
No, no, it's okay, it's confusing, because we're amending the existing code, as opposed to the balance of ordinance, which is new code.
And I even went to the original and tried to read through it, to see what wasn't being changed.
So the direction and intent is, it's a type-two process, it's done in an expedited manner. Type-one is used for an extension of something that was already approved. And if that's the direction, we'll make sure that this tracks to follow. I believe it does, but we'll triple-check.
Okay.
Okay, and we're, that's our intent, too.
Okay, thank you, because I was worried.
Oh, sure, for good reason.
Anybody else? I had a couple. Derek, you asked the insurance question I was going to ask. Just to clarify, did you say that the oil heaters are mandatory? So that's all they can use, and they have to be provided? Okay. And that's only in the temporary house, tiny house stuff?
As the commission might recall, the issue was that other types of heaters, these are unsprinkled with limited access facilities, and the concern was that they're highly combustible. If it was a tent, a tent goes up.
Yeah.
But a building burns and consumes. That's why many jurisdictions have banned heaters. Well, it's going to get cold in the winter, and folks are there. We met with our building official, and we made inquiries of other folks, saying, "Well, how do you deal with that issue?" Because our fear would be, someone would get power and provide something, that was the ceramic heaters that have the glowing red face, or any of those, a kerosene heater. What was suggested, and what we've incorporated, was the oil-filled heaters, if they fall over, they switch off, there's no fire risk, but they provide the heating. If they were supplied, it would be preemptive to do it. And they're not that costly. So we think it's a good solution to provide heat, and for the reasons described by Lisa.
Thank you.
These are portable, not, they're not installed on the wall?
They're the portable ones. I have one in my office. They're the ones people use to fill in heat in smaller areas. They're actually more than adequate for the size of these facilities.
So the portable heaters and the tiny houses, who's providing those to start out with? The person who is asking for the permit?
One would assume that they would, it's a requirement, so therefore, any units that are assembled and brought to the site, or provided by the organizer, the site organizer or sponsor, would have them.
Okay, thank you.
And we would check off to ensure they meet that. That's a condition of approval.
Anybody else? No?
I just have a couple comments. I'm glad to see, without citing the page, I'm glad to see that the permits are being processed without charge. I know that was something that was brought up to help save the cost, so I'm glad to see that was in there. This is outside of this, and it's just... This is much needed, and I wouldn't want to give the impression I'm not supporting it, but watching the last city council meeting, where the property and business owner next to the drop-in center had spoken about the impact, losing tenants, losing money, and it's a real issue for businesses or residential having impact. And I wouldn't want to worry, I mean, I do worry about the impacts, but I wouldn't want that to be a reason why this wouldn't proceed forward. But I'm just wondering if the city is looking at any type of mitigation for these type of situations? If there's federal grants, or state grants, or business grants, or something, so that if a business is, you know, truly could show harm to their business, and that it is jeopardizing them being able to hold property or continue their business, because some of these facilities could go up to five years, is there, is, are anyone at the city level looking at that, and then trying to figure out solutions for it? So that the owner of those properties don't have to pursue litigation because of those impacts? And again, this is a little bit outside of this, but I think it's a question that has to be raised if we're going to be responsible, because impacts are real.
So that individual has appealed the permit issuance, and I can't discuss this matter. It's under appeal, will be considered by the hearing examiner. What I can say as a general response is the suite of conditions that we develop, specifically the site, are to reduce the risks of impact to adjacent properties to the greatest extent possible. One should also acknowledge that there's a limitation on term for these. They can't go on forever. Just like having construction next door, it's disruptive, and may have an effect on you, but at a period of time, it ends, and you move forward. You try to reduce it. Compensation for activities would likely be endless for the range of activities public provides. However, folks do have rights, and we try to consider and protect their rights of operation. That building, buildings are located in close proximity to uses that have traditionally housed for over 100 years. Those who are in shelter can expect that use to continue. However, we need to mitigate to the greatest extent possible impacts on adjacent properties. So likely, when folks feel we haven't done that well, they'll appeal. In this case, they have. And the hearing examiner will view and say, "Are these conditions adequate?" I should also note that for temporary encampments sponsored by a religious organization on land they own or lease, again, we can't prohibit the use. All we could do is condition it for public health and safety. Folks congregating on the street is not a violation of law.
Lisa?
I do feel that a lot of this plan is well-written to help mitigate the impacts. And, you know, and I can go through this and cite a whole bunch, but I would encourage the public or individuals to read it, because I do think there's a lot in here that was thoughtfully put in with those concerns in mind. And not wanting to necessarily bring up a particular individual, but I just was kind of wondering, not so much about their situation, nor the conditions of what's happening, but whether or not there was any resources available. Because we have resources to help set up these, and help, you know, we have our homeless fund and other things that we are... fund and other things that we are trying to address that issue. I just didn't know if there was anything, opportunities that could help individuals and businesses in that situation, and there may not be, but I just didn't know, because I'm not knowledgeable in that area, if there was anything, or if it's even potentially to be looked at.
Yeah, in general terms, again, we can provide additional services to mitigate issues. We could provide, and have required, and we could require for any applicant, security and outreach to the neighborhood. We can help minimize the effect, but there will be effects to it. The question is whether they're within an acceptable level, and we don't take those matters lightly. For any application on any topic we get, we consider the effect on adjacent properties. The law's very clear on some issues, and we try to protect people's rights as much as we can, both folks proposing the activity and those who might be affected in the surrounding area. And that's all I could say, is that we've structured this to try to provide the tools within the framework we're allowed to work on to condition it appropriately.
Thank you. Garrett?
Well, I certainly approve of the ordinance as drafted. I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval, and forward this to city council for consideration, as drafted in the August ninth staff report and amended in our discussion this evening.
Second?
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. We're going to give that to Phyllis.
That's okay.
The motion was to recommend approval of the ordinance and forward to city council as drafted, with really two minor recommendations discussed today and unanimously recommended to staff. Thank you, Garrett. Is there discussion on the motion?
There was an additional change, the one from Kurt regarding extending the timeframe.
Yes.
If needed, mutually agreed upon.
Sorry, you listed a number of staff changes, and those were baked into this, so we can assume that those are part of the recommendation, but let's just clarify that that, Garrett, that motion included all of the recommended changes, both the staff and the two raised by the commission. Thank you, Lisa. Speak to your motion.
Well, I just, I think it's timely, and, you know, this ordinance provides a regulatory structure for a really unfortunate emerging need, and I think it's balanced and fair. I think it has some strong accountability measures and some performance objectives that will help provide some certainty for the users and help prevent appeals, because getting these things off the ground is going to be a challenge, and if they get appealed every time they're up for six months, that doesn't do anybody any good. So, and I look forward to hopefully working on the permanent shelter ordinance, because I, a lot of the concerns that you brought up, Lisa, I share, and I think when you get into permanent shelters, it becomes a lot more amplified, because that use is permanent. And we had some testimony from the mission tonight, which was really nice to hear, good enthusiasm. But I went to the drop-in center a month or so ago just to do a donation, and, you know, to be perfectly honest, going in the front door, it is a bit intimidating, you know? You know, there's people on the sidewalks, and you're, you know, there's some people that have mental health disorders, or, you know, maybe schizophrenia, they're talking to themselves, it's a little daunting. And when I got inside, I was actually surprised by the amount of structure, and it was pretty well-organized, and there was some coherence in there, and I was impressed. And so, I think when we look at the permanent shelters, we start talking about, how do we develop a facade or a presentation that isn't intimidating to the public? I think people will be a lot more accepting of the use. And to take like the Agape House, for example, when you go back there, it's quiet, you know, and I know that's a different service that's being provided, but it's very, very well-done. And so, you know, that's the big work, I think, that's ahead of us. This, this, this is good, this needs to happen soon, and so...
Thank you. Anybody else, Lisa?
I just, again, I want to thank you, it was well-written, I liked the way it was presented. A lot of the issues or concerns we had are addressed, and I look forward to hopefully seeing some of these come to fruit, so that we can have places for people to park and be safe, and so I think the areas that we identified in inclusion of tiny homes was great, so you guys did a great job, and I appreciate it, and I'm confident our community will be also as appreciative of it, so, good job.
Mike?
Backing what both of you just said, you know, ideally, everyone would have a home to live in independently. In lieu of that, we need to work on our permanent supportive housing. In lieu of having enough of that, this ordinance comes into play, and if, you know, there will be impacts to neighboring residents or businesses, but I think in lieu of doing this, if, you know, there are impacts right now, not having these, whether that's downtown, residents and businesses, or other areas where, you know, if people have no place to go, they're congregating, and there's side effects of that, and, you know, people are parking in the street. If we can give, if we can point the people to a place to say, here's where you can spend the night, we can start to, I think, address some of those impacts from people who are just sleeping anywhere they can, you know, just on a public right-of-way. So, it's all about building those layers up towards the ideal, and eventually, maybe we wouldn't need these, but we're a long ways from that today.
I think, I'd like to comment on what Russ said, and actually echoed what Steve, one of our commissioners, said at a prior meeting, which is, you know, there's just, there's not, it's not one-size-fits-all, and that's one of the things that's really important to me about this, and I appreciated that comment, because getting people into housing is a first step, but then what really solves this issue is services, and that's what you commented on, you know, getting people who have mental health issues into treatment, and drug addiction issues into treatment, and so, the more options we give people who don't fit into the one box, that's the first step toward, and I like them being regulated, because then we start knowing who these people are who have needs, and we can do a better job of providing the limited services that we have to provide. So, for me, that was a very poignant comment, and I think Steve mentioned that about an interview he saw about a gentleman in Seattle, he was like, I don't want to go live in that, you know, I'm happy doing something different, and we need to acknowledge that. So, this is a chance to, like, cast a bigger net. Beyond that, I'd support all those comments. I do think that this is supported well in our comp plan. You put that in the staff report, and I appreciate that, I feel like staff adequately addressed all of our commission concerns that have been raised over the past couple of months. Maybe not exactly the way any individual commissioner wanted it, but I felt like there was an effort to address all of the concerns that were raised, and when I read through this, I also appreciated that, because it was clear that you tried to balance those concerns about safety and, you know, some of the other concerns that were raised. So, I, I'm going to vote for this because, because of all those reasons.
Anybody else? All right. I think we have a motion. I'm going to restate it. The motion was to recommend approval and forward to city council ordinance as drafted, and with the three modifications discussed tonight. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion was forwarded five zero. Thank you, Lisa, for all the work on this, and Rick, and Kurt. Yeah, and I'm sure there were other folks behind the scenes. So, with that, we will close the public hearing, and we will have a small amount of business to conduct before we close the overall meeting. We don't have anything on our calendar, but you're suggesting that we should hold open these upcoming first and thirds, because we do have a busy schedule anticipated. Is that correct?
Yes, members of the commission, we will be working on the longer-term shelters, and points raised today are issues that we're considering right now in terms of providing an area, you have to have an area for people to congregate. You have to have adequate space, you have to deal with separation, because now we're not dealing with a limited term, we're dealing with a longer term that might have an effect, a profound effect, and we hope to have that in draft form before you, within the next month or so. I should also note that we'll be starting in the fall, there are a number of issues associated with our comp plan amendments, the annual docket, and we'll start talking a little bit about that at your schedule there. After we wrestle our way through the long-term, longer-term facilities, we will be returning to our work program, and that will be addressing some of the issues that are associated with with family definition and boarding houses, because that affects our enforcement, and interestingly enough, it'll be queued up as we talk about some of the options for longer-term facilities for homelessness, because some approaches are to use single-family homes, residential, and would have run into the face of our family definition. So, we have to, we're going to be starting on that, in a sense, through that, and then we'll continue with talking a little bit more to help make sure the definition is appropriate at this time. I also bring to the commission's attention that there will be a council meeting on the twentieth, and your work on the short-term rentals will be the subject of that work session, and council is going through your ordinance as recommended, sort of going to say, you know, essentially, it's a leaded discussion, do you agree with this? If it's good, okay, let's move to the next issue, do we agree with this? It should help frame how we proceed on that matter. Additionally, you'll note in the, the meeting, we have a policy discussion, a work session on manufactured home parks. As the commission is aware from the work we did on the comprehensive plan, it does provide homes for about nine hundred folks in our community. It is a, one of the more affordable housing ownership models. There is, though not present here, there have been pressures in the Puget Sound area to see these convert, and it creates an issue in terms of a community that's existing, and how do you deal with its displacement or its preservation? Towards that end, the city will be working, our staff will be working with the council to say, we've identified a suite of different approaches communities can use, from everything from do-nothing, status quo, to ordinance development, transfer development rights, overlay zones, things like that. We're looking for direction from the city council at that time, and the reason for that is, it's so wide of a range of solutions, we don't have the resources to pursue them all. We want to say, which ones seem the, which of this list seem the most likely fit? Ultimately, that will be in front of this body, and we'll be coming forward with recommendations that come out of that research, and we will be doing much more detailed research to see how it might apply here on the selected methods. So, council is not making a decision, but sort of helping us refine our scope, and then directing you to determine the best approach from that.
That's on the twentieth?
That's on the twentieth.
And so, you had suggested that might be a good, if you were going to watch a council meeting, that might be a good one, because that's going to be the early framing of their kind of opinion on these topics that will ultimately come back to us?
Yeah, and all their material, all the materials to date would be available for you, but you might say, how come we're not considering this method? You know, why is that not in the toolbox? And there might be some reasons that come out of this discussion, because they're just trying to focus on, this seems to be the solution that we should look at, not sure if any of these will perfect, but we want to narrow the, imagine a flashlight this wide, trying to get it down to this, so we can actually go and investigate them in depth.
Lisa? Thank you, Rick.
That going to be during the evening session, or is that going to be during a work session?
It's during the day, but it's available online, so you'll be able to call it up and watch the discussion after the meeting is posted. So, if you're not available, you're working, many of you do, you could just call it up a few days later online and take a look. It will now be, I imagine it'll be about an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour total, and we have about a fifteen-minute presentation of the range of options, and our research, we have engaged a consultant to help us, is just the tip of the iceberg, saying, this is what's out there if you look across the state in addressing this issue, and here's the pros and cons in each one, which are the ones you think we should investigate, based on what you know?
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right. Thank you again, and we will adjourn.